To order the Glen County Board of Education meeting on February 13th of 2024. We have Mr. Holsey doing our invocation and pledge tonight.
Let me pray. Dear heavenly Father, we thank you so much for this day and for your men and women for blessings. Please just continue to bless and guide us in all that we do to the glory of your name. Amen. Blessed be your name to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Mr. Holsey. All right, Ms. Dozier is making her way to the podium. We've got a spotlight on our Glen County students that are here with us tonight. All right. Good evening, everyone.
Good evening.
Altama Elementary student Keon Sam served as the Georgia State Elementary Junior Beta Club Vice President. He, along with Beta Club Advisor Mrs. Candace Vaughn, will discuss their plans for the National Beta Club Conference and all the amazing things that they have planned during this school year.
Good evening.
Good evening.
My name is Candace Vaughn, and I serve as the sponsor for Altama's Beta Club. I've held this post for the last 11 years. My co-sponsor, Ms. Marika Floyd, who is also here tonight, has served for the past two years. Each year, students in 4th and 5th grade are nominated by their teachers based on outstanding academics, character, service, and leadership achievement to become members of the Junior Beta Club. We serve our community by volunteering in our school and by participating in several community-based volunteer opportunities, including the MLK Day of Service organized by A Better Glen and volunteering at the Alpha Kappa Alpha Sorority Incorporated Black Expo. Last year, our club made Glen County history when our very own Keon Sam was elected to serve as the Georgia Elementary Beta Club's State Vice President. This was not only a first for Altama, but a first for our county. Keon served alongside officers from across the state and was instrumental in serving at the state Beta Convention in Savannah. Our Beta Club was afforded an opportunity to participate at the convention again this year. It was because of generous donations from organizations like A Better Glen that our club was able to experience this amazing opportunity. We placed second in the Spanish competition, fourth in musicology, and fourth in marketing and communications. That means that 10 of Altama's Betas have earned a place in the National Junior Beta Club Convention in June of 2024. We're currently seeking sponsorships to assist our efforts to attend Nationals. Please see me if you would like to assist us with attending Nationals. Now, without further ado, I introduce to some and present to others none other than Altama's Keon Sam.
Dear Board of Edu- Dear Board of Education members, teachers, family, and friends, as I stand before you today, I am filled with a mix of emotions. It's been an incredible journey serving as your Georgia State Beta Club Vice President. This year, I pass on the baton, but I express my heartfelt gratitude to each one of you. Thank you for your guidance, support, and wisdom. To my fellow Beta Club members, I am grateful for your cooperation, support, and friendship. We have worked together, faced challenges, and celebrated victories. I am proud of what we have achieved together. We have not only excelled in academics, but also in community service, leadership, and character development. We have upheld the values of our club and made a positive impact on our school and community. I want you to know that I will always cherish the memories and experiences I have gained during my terms as Vice President. I am grateful for the trust you've placed in me and for the opportunity to serve. I am excited about the future of our club, and I am confident that we will continue to uphold the values of our Beta Club. Here's to continuing the sex of Georgia State Elementary Beta Club.
Well spoken and well dressed. If you'd like.
You did such an outstanding job.
Next up, the Glen County Association of Educators sponsored the 2024 Glen County Spelling Bee in January, and students from our 14 elementary and middle schools competed for the rights to represent Glen County at the Region 8 Spelling Bee. Five rounds of fierce competition ended with Riley Norman, an 8th grader at Jameakin Middle, correctly spelling the word excursion against Jaslyn Frierson, a Goodyear Elementary 5th grader who will serve as the alternate. The Region 8 District Spelling Bee will be held on February 24th, and if Riley wins there, he will compete in the Georgia Association of Educators State Spelling Bee on March 15th. Please join me in congratulating Riley Jaslyn and all of our school-level winners and alternates. And this is Jaslyn.
Hello, I am Jaslyn. And...
Should we give you a word to spell?
I don't know if we dig enough.
We'll give you a break on that.
I go to Goodyear Elementary.
And you're in which grade?
5th.
5th grade. Well, that's very impressive for a 5th grader to be an alternate in our county's spelling bee. It's a great job.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. That's all I have for this evening.
Thank you, Ms. Dozier, and thank you to our students that are here tonight. Y'all are wonderful representations of our county, and we appreciate all the hard work you put into your school and academics. Okay, so next we have citizens address the board. No one signed the list, so we'll move on to the approval of the agenda. Do I hear a motion to approve the agenda as presented tonight?
To move.
Second. Oh, I got two for each one. Let's see. Mr. Holsey with a motion to approve the agenda, and Ms. Gibbons with a second. All those in favor of the agenda as it's written? Okay, that's unanimous. We'll move on to the consent agenda items. These items were discussed at our work session on Thursday. The information was presented, and we had the opportunity to ask questions on the topics. So on the consent agenda, we'll put number 7, the approval of the January 4th, 2024 work session meeting minutes; 8, the approval of the January 9th, 2024 regular board meeting minutes; 9A personnel; 9B field trips; 9C1, the Goode Report; 9D1, the approval of the December 2023 financials; 9D2, the approval of the Orton-Gillingham Comprehensive Training; 9D4, the approval of the Badge Pass Identity Manager; 9D5, the approval of Sterling DOAS unit. That's an HVAC unit, I think. 9D6, approval of the surplus buses; 9D7, approval of the surplus active boards. And we did not have any policy on the agenda, so we'll add 9E, the Policy Committee line item, to that as well. Does anyone have any additions or deletions to the list? Any discussion on this? Okay, I'll entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda items listed. Motion by Mr. Edgy.
Second.
Second by Mr. Roda. All of those in favor of approval of the consent agenda items? It is unanimous? All right, so that leaves us with 9D4, approval of the Goodyear Elementary gym renovations, gross maximum price. If we can just go over that again, we might have some questions.
Yes. So over the past couple of years, really, there have been complaints about the smell in the Goodyear gym and the carpet, which is now Goodyear's, the last remaining gym that has a carpeted floor. And of course, over the last 20 years, the carpet does hold a lot of smells and has a lot of issues with it, to say the least. But just to replace the floor would not make sense at this time when we have a leaking roof, which is contributing to some of the smells, as well as some of the insulation that's up underneath. The ceiling of the gym is also starting to fall down, so it would not make sense to replace just the floor at this time and still have those other issues to continue to address. So one of the larger portions of this is replacing the roof, which is $178,000. But all that needs to be done. And this would bring the gym floor up to the same rubberized-type floor that we now have. Well, after the summer, we'll now have an Oliver Gym, because the Stella Marsh will be replaced this summer as well. And as far as the Pope construction, we're kind of handling this similar to what we did with the annex floor in the Andy Egmont Street parking, piggybacking off of their construction management contract. This is work very similar to what they're already doing this summer at Stella Marsh, and we get it back out just through them, just because they're already going to have similar contractors or doing similar work at Stella Marsh.
Is anybody having questions or discussion on this?
And this will also just, you see some demolition stuff on there. There's a lot of old heaters and stove pipes and other penetrations through the roof that have absolutely no use. None of that equipment's worked in years, and it's not needed anymore. So we're going to remove all that to clean it up, so that we no longer have all those penetrations in the roof and the walls.
Thank you, Mr. Blackeberry. Any comments? All right. I'll entertain a motion to approve the Goodyear Elementary Gym renovation gross maximum price. Motion by Ms. Gibbons.
I'll second that.
Second by Mr. Edgy. All right, all of those in favor of approving the gross maximum price for the Goodyear Gym renovation? Raise your hand. Okay, it's unanimous. I'm going to make a motion that we enter into executive session for safety and personnel. Do I hear a second on that?
I'll second that.
Second by Mr. Edgy. All those in favor of adjourning to executive session? We're dismissing to executive session. Thank you, it's unanimous at 6:12.
Both are fine.
Okay, both y'all come.
Return to open session.
So moved.
Motion by Ms. Gibbons.
Second.
I'm sorry, I didn't catch it. Second by Mr. Madala. All those in favor of returning to open session? It's unanimous at 6:34. There's no other business, so I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
Hold up, did we personnel?
We've already, we voted on it.
We did. Sorry about that.
Okay, anybody want to go home? A motion by Ms. Gibbons to adjourn to the next meeting. Mr. Edgy?
Thought we were just starting.
All right, all those in favor rejoining? It's unanimous at 6:35. Thank you.